Continue to stand for a moment of silence for our native, Lumsdale High School graduate, scout, honor scout, graduate of Worcester State, ROTC, boot camp, United States Marines, flight school, and pilot. Just a moment of silence, please, for Ross Reynolds, Captain Ross Reynolds. Thank you. And I know that the class was around today. You couldn't have found a better kid, a better student, a better scout, a better friend. Every teacher, I'm sure, has nothing but wonderful things to say. Your smile said it all. The last picture that you see that they've been using is him, he's holding this little white thing, and nobody could figure out what it was. It's a sled. And he's in his full military gear, right up on the helicopter. His aircraft, and it hit to Norway, and some of those heat temperatures and different weather patterns. And he was holding his thing, and nobody could figure out it was a sled. Shows his youthfulness, still a kid in many ways. And just sad, but it's his lifelong dream. And twenty-seven years old, to be a captain in Marines, flying in a piece of equipment like that, quite something. Sure, so his family thanks everyone. They obviously, you know, right now appreciate a little bit of time to just try to grasp all of this and absorb it and try to deal with it. But they appreciate everyone, people have been just absolutely wonderful. So anyway, thank you, Paul. They just couldn't find a better student. I think there's a guidance counselor, a teacher, a principal, anybody can say a bad word about Ross. His Eagle Scout project, very difficult to get Eagle Scout, very few people ever make it to that. Mostly because they start their Eagle Scout project when they're sixteen and get very busy in their life. They have new things like girlfriends and jobs, and they turn down school, everything else that's going on in life. And usually it's the mom that gets involved at the point where they make it to Eagle Scout. Very few scouts ever make it to that level. And his project was behind the veterans' center, little park back there, we'd sit and kind of look over the pond. And one of his, one of the aspects of getting Eagle Scout is to, you have to do all the work. You have to organize everyone, get other people volunteer, get materials. It's a lot of work for somebody that might be sixteen, eight. You have to get it by eighteen after that, you can't get it. But it's a lot of work, and so you know how to turn, you know how to make work fun. And that was his goal, and he was still have some fun while working. Again, the family thanks you for all the help and the support. And there'll be much more support in later days as they decide on who will answer for Ross. Okay. We'll read our statement. Lumsdale School Committee meets seven o'clock, now it's changing to six, first and third Mondays of every month from September to June, and then on for the summer, if necessary, location meetings during the course of the year. Said summer meetings will be called as needed. All meetings of Lumsdale School Committee are open to the public and representatives of the press, except for executive sessions held in both sessions as defined by laws. Open meetings are conducted for the purpose of carrying on in school business. Except in emergencies, advanced announcements, and the agenda for all school committee meetings will occur forty-eight hours prior to the meeting through an official posting at City Hall, through an official posting at City Hall. Ordinarily, access to the cover page of the agenda for each meeting will be available in superintendent's office prior to the meeting. No member of the general public has the right to speak during the meeting unless and until recognized by the chair. And all persons at such meeting at the request of the chairperson shall be cited. If after warning from the chairperson, individual persist in disorderly behavior, the chairperson may order the person to withdraw from the meeting. The chairperson may order a constable or other person to move him or her from the meeting if the individual does not withdraw from the chair. At the beginning of each school committee meeting, with permission of the chairperson, citizens may address the committee on items on the agenda or any other issues relating to the overall school operations. However, no criticism of school personnel will be permitted at such meetings. Citizens will have two minutes to express their views in school committee. And school committee members will not respond. Chairperson may make exceptions, guidelines in this paragraph, and his or her decisions. Committee represents the needs of all Lumsdale School students, places their interest above all school exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We'll advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education here in the city. So I'd like to open it up for the public, the public forum. Would anyone like to address the committee? Does anyone sign up? Anyone like to address the committee? Once again, is there anyone online that would like to address the committee? Anybody missed the phone? Nobody? Once again, online? If not, we'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll now on to communications, superintendent.
There are no communications this evening.
Well, then move on to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much for bringing up Ross and having a moment of silence. Many of us here tonight have a special connection with him. And today, a lot of us were talking about him and remembering the stories. He really did have a sense of humor. In middle school, I asked him to be one of my math leads, and he said, Mrs. DQ, that's so not cool. I said, I know, but I really need you on the team. He's like, all right, tell me what I have to do. That's just the type of kid he was. And today, everybody was having those moments and those conversations of remembering him. He is somebody that everybody remembers in such a positive way, and that he is a role model, besides being a hero for our students. So there was much conversation today, and we will be supporting the family, however we need to in the future, should the need arise. So again, thank you for having a moment of silence for Ross Reynolds. Next, I want to let everybody know that CTI is hosting their open house this Saturday. This is, this is a great opportunity. This is for incoming freshmen. And this is an opportunity for students and their families, they can walk all the shops. Try a few of the activities out, machinery. I highly recommend everybody come through their culinary. If you haven't seen the menu lately, the food has been incredible. So that is happening on Saturday from eight to twelve. Come on in, it's well worth it. I think every incoming freshman should at least take a look at what our vote tech program looks like. And parents can ask any questions they want, and there will be staff without, throughout the building to help everyone. Kindergarten registration continues. We are, we're loaded with kindergarten for the fall. So we are asking parents to give us a call, set your appointment. We have, you can do your appointment virtually or in person. We have English, Spanish, and Portuguese staff to help any family. But we want to get as many families in front of us as soon as possible so that we can make sure that we get all the proper steps in place. So it's a seamless transition for our K students. And on March thirty-first, our LPAC, these are our English language parents. Their group is meeting virtually from six-thirty to seven-thirty. The link for this meeting can be found either in my Sunday message or on our website. All these meetings are conducted in English, Spanish, and Portuguese. These meetings are a great communication tool for ensuring that all of our parents are informed and up to date on any initiatives and anything that's happening throughout the district. And then lastly, we have some celebratory news for some. Dr. Jim Riley has accepted the superintendent position in the Warcheset Regional School District. Although our loss, he will be a remarkable leader, and I look forward to my continued professional relationship with him as a superintendent. We're really proud of you, Jim, and we wish you nothing but the best. But always remember, you still bleed blue, even though you might be looking green. So we went, we wish you the best of luck, and we'll support you in whatever you need. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We're all here to help you. I made all the mistakes at least five times, so if you need any help, I can kind of help you some, some of them. Some of the voices. All right, so the school committee had asked for budget presentations. Last week, we did elementary, and this week, we're doing, well, we're doing middle school budget presentations. Then we'll do technology updates and budget.
Matthew and Doug. So here, there are two stellar middle school principals.
Might not wrestle in first to see who goes first?
We were gonna do that, but then Matt wore his jacket, so.
That makes you go first.
Good to see everybody. Doug Gable, principal over at Skyview, for those who don't know me, and of course, welcome to our newer school committee members, as well as our previous school committee members. So good to see everybody in person, and nice to be here, Jim.
And Matt Steinberg, principal at Sanusette School. Echo the same sentiments as Doug, and we're happy to be with you tonight to talk about what's going on at our respective middle schools.
That's it. So to get right into it, you guys have all seen in the back at some of our information. So unless you guys would like us to go through numbers, we can certainly do that. But our anticipation was, we were probably looking just for kind of us to discuss some of the things that you might be seeing in there for our goals and our projects and our focus for coming school year, fiscal year twenty-three. And we are looking forward to that. I think the biggest thing we're all experiencing right now is almost the end of COVID. Real close, we keep feeling like we are there, we keep feeling like the last of the restrictions are gone, only to find that there's still some stuff out there, there's still some concern out there. So one of the biggest things I think we're gonna see coming out of this two-years stint, if you will, is really an opening up of new opportunities and opening up of previously open opportunities that we did not take advantage of enough in my eyes. So really looking forward to things opening up. One of the things we're pushing for going into the next year is increased professional development opportunities for both myself and my administrative leaders, as well as our teaching staff. And these would be in addition to those provided by the district and in district. So there's gonna be a lot more opportunity throughout the last two years. Some of our teaching staff have certainly been undertaking some professional development, but it's been because of the COVID restrictions restricted. It's been online, it's been attend online. I think I find that whereas there can be some benefit there in terms of travel time, in terms of ability to make it, in terms of just your comfort level for attending those, I think nothing beats in-person learning. I think nothing beats in-person interactions with your peers. And that's really what we're looking for. We want our staff to branch out, to find new opportunities, to work with staff in other districts, to really work together to find the best ways to advance our learning outside of COVID. I think our kids found and our teachers found that in-person learning definitely works the best for the kids, and it certainly works better for the adults as well. So really pushing our staff to find those new opportunities. We'll be looking for them ourselves, looking for opportunities for groups of our staff to attend professional development, whether it be by content area, grade level specific. But we're really looking to push that among all our staff, to really branch out and take advantage of the opportunities that will be opening up again. We're also looking to have our teacher teams push for more experiential learning. We'll talk a little bit about some of the new curriculum products that we're hoping to have in place in the next year. One of the ideas that we're looking towards is in our science department, a lot more phenomenon-based experiences for the kids, a lot more hands-on learning. And we're really looking for that across the board. I'd love to have, again, with the lessening and the opening up of COVID restrictions, really start getting back to having teachers explore the opportunity for educational field trips, experiential field trips, or programs that we can bring into the school, that will bring more hands-on, a more, let's touch real life a little bit more, and bring what these kids should be experiencing outside the building, let's bring it into the building. And I think a lot of those programs offer opportunities for children that might not normally be able to attend certain events, might not be able to experience certain programs through a variety of reasons. So I think school is the perfect opportunity and the perfect vehicle to get these students those opportunities that they might normally not be able to attend. So we're really looking for those experiential learning times that we can push our teacher teams to find. And of course, we want to keep it open and keep our minds open as administrators to say, yeah, that is something that would benefit our students. It doesn't all have to be sitting in the classroom staring at the teacher all day. Let's find those experiences where we can. One of the things we'd like to do with that is bringing back our STEM program, our current specialist listings, including physical education, music, art, and media. We do not have STEM, we had it a couple of years ago. We would love to bring that back. It gives students, again, more of those hands-on experiential learning opportunities. It also gives us the ability, as we look towards a new curriculum for our science teachers, it allows us to have somebody to work together with those science teachers to address the Massachusetts Standards for Science, Technology, and Engineering. And most of those cover hands-on learning. So you're working with tools, you're working through the design process. You're actually building items that you can learn about and go through the design process and prototype, and take your mistakes and go back and redesign. So we're really kind of pushing that across the board in science. We'd love to have STEM back as a piece of that. I think they work hand-in-hand, and will allow a new curriculum to be more easily facilitated by our science teachers. Beyond that, we're certainly looking for, in terms of our facilities, we would love, as a big capital project, I would love to see our gymnasium floor redone. I think I've been looking on with a little bit of jealousy at Matt's floor that he got taken care of last year. It's still a fantastic look. It's beautiful in there. So I think a little bit of that comes through. It's amazing when you really think about it, what the kids take away from the building and what the kids experience in the building. Every kid in every grade, at some point in the year, is taking physical education, is experiencing the gym, is in that room, if you will. Big as it is, it's still considered a room. And I think just seeing some of the eyes light up and some of the experiences that Matt has had with having some of the basketball games there, it's really become a showpiece for the building. We'd love to see the same in our building. I think it instills a lot of school pride when you see, when the kids see us taking the time and the investment to put something together like that that says, hey, Skyview is important, we want you to have quality facilities. We understand that this could be better, and let's find ways where we can make it better. So I love the fact that Matt's talked about the pride that the kids have in that gymnasium and the pride that he has as a leader of the school and the pride that a lot of the staff is. So I would love to instill that with us. I think it's a great project for us. It's certainly something that's needed. We're hitting our twentieth year with that gym floor, and while our custodians will refinish it minorly during the years, nothing beats a complete redo. I think we have the opportunity to really make something special. And it also benefits the city because we got a lot of city programs coming in, not just sports, but of course, one of the voting stations. So what a great way to highlight what we're doing in the schools by showing off a new gym floor for people coming in and voting. Beyond that, I will designate the floor back to Matt, and then we'll certainly be here for questions going forward.
Thank you, Doug. Just to give you a preview of what we go through professional development as leaders, usually when Doug and I come together on something, Doug does about ninety-five percent of the talking, and I have a little five percent really hits it with the fan. Finally, I close it, so it's a joke.
He's a closer.
I am.
He's a closer.
So I'll just, I'll start with a promo real quick, because that's, I love to do about our school. I think I've sent this out to all of you recently, and I'll put it out in the general public and school committee tonight. We're riding on a high right now with our unified basketball program. Two years ago, the, right before COVID hit, we were part of the initial middle school unified basketball program in the state. There were regions throughout the state, and we were in the central mass region. We were on our way to our very first game, and we had to turn the bus around because we had a possible scare in our building, right when COVID was brand, brand new two years ago. And it crushed our kids, crushed them, because we geared up, we had practice, we had a huge ceremony send-off. And we were so excited to have it come back this year. We jumped, as soon as I saw the, we're in, doesn't even matter, we're in. We went to our first game this past Thursday. When I tell you the kids were floating on the court, I mean, I think literally one girl, one of our students hit a basket and just kind of glided down the floor, just with pure joy. Our unified partners, the athletes were incredible. So the reason I'm saying all this is that this Wednesday, three-thirty, the gym is open to all. We'd love to pack the gym and really give our kids a quite a show. We're really excited. A lot of our kids have been talking about it in the building, and they're, they're all gonna be there. So, so we're really excited. So that's just a quick promo for our unified program. But just, I'll go, I'll be real quick, I just, I wanna get to any questions you may have. We, as Doug was mentioning, you know, we're really looking at, you know, an adoption of new curriculum programs with fidelity within the buildings, both Skyview and Sanusette. We are talking about, you know, adopting a new science curriculum next year. As Doug mentioned, he's a science, former science teacher, so that's his bag. We're also looking at a brand-new ELA curriculum. I was a humanities teacher, so I've been part of that process, that an ELA curriculum that meets all of our students' needs across our demographics, tying in our ELL population, SPED population, which in the past may have not been represented by some of the, the current things we have in our particular ELA curriculum in the middle school level. So we're really, really excited to start adopting those in the next school year. So we're doing a lot of work with that. We're doing a lot of work as well in the building with rigor, grade level rigor, really working with our teachers on, through our own professional development on achievement, and what does that look like for students, and how can we develop this idea of intellectualism with all of our students, that they feel that, one, their teachers are pushing them, and they feel comfortable being pushed and really achieving. So we're, as we get back from COVID and coming, coming back to normal, that's starting to sink in. It took a little bit. You know, first few months, it was, it was tricky. I think it's starting to feel normal again, and that's, that's really the focus now as we go forward. And we're gonna be in the N-CAS before we know it. So it's, it's now the time to really push on that. You know, I, I will say that, just to focus on our facility, our gym floor is incredible. We're really excited for that. We also just added, I put this on our social media, some wonderful murals that a local artist from Pittsburgh State had done for us as part of a senior project. And we're doing a special ceremony to thank her on Wednesday. And the murals, in case, are, they incorporate our, our school message, which is care, civil, achieve, respect, and courage. But within the mural, there's all these different meanings of those words that the kids gave her as feedback. They're wonderful. It's got a real SEL focus. You know, we, we push our social emotional learning within our classrooms, not just our, you know, day-to-day with our support staff that are in the building, but also within our regular core classes. You know, students are, feel comfortable coming into school every day, being able to express themselves, whether it's, you know, on a piece of paper, or, you know, whether it's giving a presentation or on that beautiful gym floor that we've mentioned a couple of times. And then, you know, Doug mentioned the STEM special. We're excited about getting that back to Sanusette as well. And it's gonna be tying into kind of our, our next big project in that building. And I'm gonna actually speak about that a little bit more with Steve Mamon, I think, and a little bit on a reconstruction and redesign of our media center area, and turning it into what we call a learning hub. And we can go into more detail on that. We've, we've done a really good job recently beefing up our classroom libraries. Our ELA teachers have great bookshelves within their room for kids to do independent reading. We also, you know, really encourage our students to visit City Library, which is wonderful for research and to check out books. But we're gonna be taking this space and not only having our media center in there and our media center specialist running her class, we're gonna have our STEM class that's coming back attached to that, we hope, and adding in their learning comments so students can come in, do some, some independent work, classes can come in and do some group work in there, and it's gonna look really incredible, we're really excited about it. So as I said, we'll talk more with, I think it's easy to go up and mention that. And finally, my last big focus is, we did the floor in the gym, and I'm working with Butch NATO on assessing our bleachers in there, because it's, those probably gonna need to be looked at just for a safety issue, so we can, you know, whether we're gonna keep them, you know, it could be a capital improvement to take them out or replace them with portables. It, it's, it's something that Butch and I have been discussing for, to kind of complete that gym and really make it a wonderful community space. So those are my big issues. Like I said, I'm short and to the point, and we are ready for any questions we may have. Thank you.
Mr. Ron, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I wrote on a, the first, wrote on curriculum products, words.
Yeah, we both touched on it, Ron.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
What's the cost of it, and how, is it gonna, by implementing, is it gonna be seamless?
I think anytime you start something new, I think seamless is always the goal. I don't think it's ever the, achieve the reality of it. But for example, we started a new curriculum called Envisions with our math departments last year. That started out, just, well, this current year, I should say, that started up back in September. And they've been working to have that incorporated to the math, and it's really kind of the curriculum that all the math teachers are using. It really was a push to have that come in and be done with fidelity across the board. There's been some growing pains, I think, there, but again, that's what we expect, and that's what the math teachers and our math, you know, our cohort. Uh, and our math, uh, you know, our cohorts downtown that help us out in terms of, uh, Michelle Oliveri, for example, and now Susan Tarallo who's on board, helping out with the math teachers. And, uh, they have been fantastic supports. Uh, we appreciate Paula getting them on board and, uh, having them kind of here to help us, guide us through these processes. We are currently, as Matt mentioned, uh, probably, uh, into our second year now, two years into, uh, developing a new English language arts curriculum. So that's been a lot of research. We're not developing, and it's probably the wrong word. Researching it, uh, going through with a teacher team that has been, uh, going through and researching eight different products. And we have, uh, narrowed that down to three different products.
Yeah, we're currently pilot three.
Yep, yep. And, uh, we're also looking at science. We've also been working in with Michelle Oliveri a lot. To, uh, work through a similar process with science. Uh, we're currently going through a process where we're, uh, looking at two different curriculum products that do go, uh, and work well through ed reports. They've gotten positive and, uh, as they say, all green ratings on ed reports. And it's two curriculum products that our teachers will be looking at. Uh, doing some, not true pilots, but dry runs with a couple of parts of those products. And we're hoping to have that chosen and the new science products starting up in September as well.
What's the cost?
So for, for cost, Ronnie, um, part of, if I, if I misspeak, Lori, um, Lori, let me know. You know, like the ELA part of that was a grant and then another part was S R. Most of the curriculum products are coming from S R money.
There was another part of that question because he, he was talking about the new gym. You don't, and Paula jumping and stalking whatever you wanted.
Okay.
The gym, Skyview, how old was that gym? It was there when the Skyview was built?
No, yes.
I would imagine, yes, you know, I don't think it's been updated since, yeah. So in the past.
Drop that date on gymnasium, on gym floor.
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, same, same.
Yeah, the, the gym floor, Ronnie, uh, uh, my, came out of my operating budget last year that, that I paid that through my, um, my purchasing budget. So that was, and, um, came under ten thousand. So it was great. It was affordable and I did an amazing job.
Ronnie was asking is the bleachers.
Yes. That is a big expense.
We pay, I mean, he said it came out of his budget, but we spent a lot of money to build that.
Correct. Why do those bleachers need to be replaced? Which is life expectancy. Ron, I just, I just, I just interpreted your questions. Go ahead. I think that's what you would like. Yeah, yeah, there's questions.
Yeah, I mean, we could use S R's. Right now they're a safety concern. Um, there's a, there's a lot of activity that happens in our gyms. And a lot of people come in in those bleachers. Um, we have done a nice job keeping up with them and repairing them. But the shelf life on them now are, there's pieces of metal sticking up. Sometimes they don't close. Sometimes they open by themselves. We just do not want to have a hazard. So it's been on our list to get that project done. Now we have the funds so we can actually do it. And so both principals work closely with Melanie in the business office and with Butch NATO and say, okay, what's a priority right now? Um, so our curriculum products, the, between our federal monies, which say, we want you to buy these high quality evidence-based curriculums. And our title grants and some of our DESI grants covers our curriculum materials. But, uh, our S R could, with facilities and safety, cover part of that as well.
Because I was, I was a gym builder. Is that under, is that in that, in that, can that be funded by?
Yes, yes, yes.
So it doesn't take out of this budget?
Nope. Those are not coming out of anybody's, um, school based budgets.
Go ahead, Dean, you getting ready to say?
No, I, 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 I want to circle back to once of the original questions. We paid a lot of money, those bleachers. So either they weren't maintained or they exceeded their life expectancy. So I think before we purchase anything else, I think I speak for the committee, we'd like to make sure that, A, the next product we buy, is sustainable and we'd like to know what the shelf life is, is other maintenance, are the maintenance things that need to be done along the way.
Yep.
So that we get twenty years out of them or thirty, I, I, I have no clue. I know the ones at St. Ann's are there and they've been there since I played basketball fifty-five years ago, but I don't know if they're safe in them. But I have no clue where interiors. I know we put a new Astro turf down at Doyle. Supposed to last us ten years. We're into like fourteen, but we really stayed up with the maintenance. So if, if, if you could keep us in touch with, purchasing department or whatever, to make sure we get a product that's sustainable, we have to do maintenance, we do the maintenance and it doesn't, like, expectancy.
That's, that's the, that's the worry I have, sustainability of these projects. Because and the dirty person, he said he took it out of his budget. Now that, hey, if, if it's S R. Does that money that he used in the budget, can S R go back and pay him his budget? Or that money gone now?
Those are two different years. So, yeah.
And maybe it is that you get portable, once they kind of fold up, move them out of the way.
And that's what I was going to say, Mr. Mayor.
So, I mean, it's a, a whole lot of new progress.
Yeah.
Flexible space is a big, is a big trend thing. So we, we may even look at that and go, no, it's better to get those out and just get portables and be flexible. We can put them anywhere.
Okay, so we'll move on to you. We have any questions?
So how long you guys have been at STEM?
Uh, two years, no.
It was leading to COVID.
Yeah.
I think it's a great program. I do. Um, and I like your other comment about getting hands-on. You know, what kind of programs we thinking about? And I like the other comment about opportunities bringing it in because there are kids that, that probably don't have that opportunity.
Absolutely.
Um, what kind of program they looking at? I know you said you thought of programs. Is there anything specific?
I think really, I think it's easy for me as a former science teacher, as Matt said, to look at those opportunities under a science meant. But there's certainly areas out there, you know, in the past, I know that we've had, uh, you know, some great programs come in with just traveling authors. Uh, you know, we've had in our sixth grade in years past, uh, you know, when they're reading about the Lost Boys. We've had one of the former Lost Boys who wrote one of the books that we read, come in and talk about their experiences. Uh, we've had opportunities and people have reached out to us, uh, that I have yet to investigate fully. Because we're really just opening up to the point where we can have folks come in. But certainly there's plenty of opportunities out there for folks to come in, uh, with any kind of experiences, uh, in terms of, whether it's science, uh, I'm sure we might find some math connections in there too, uh, social studies ELA and really even things beyond that. Uh, you know, a couple of years back, we were involved in Nature's Classroom. Matt was able, actually able to get them to come in, to his school back in the fall. Uh, they actually turned some of their programming into, hey, you can't come to us because of COVID. We're going to bring some stuff to you. So that's something they've been experimenting with. So I think there's a lot of organizations out there that are coming up with these ideas now too. Really as a result of the pandemic, but they're finding that, hey, why wouldn't we keep this going even outside of the pandemic? Because in this grade to be able to take it right to the, to, to the schools. And we've got such great areas. Both schools have great outside areas where we can really get the kids out there and learning in a different environment. Uh, learning some of the stuff that's going on right in their own city and in their own environment. Uh, and I think anytime you can show a kid that there's stuff, you know, in and around their neighborhood that you can learn from, it's a huge piece.
I think one thing to just to add to that too is that I'm excited about the, uh, potential job skills that it's going to bring with it. For our students to see that, um, there are so many opportunities for them using that background, using that STEM background. We have a teacher in our building, a former STEM teacher who teaches sixth grade science and she's got these wonderful posters all throughout a room of, different people in STEM careers saying, look, this is me. I did this. I did, I went to school for this. And it's, it's, it's that focus as the, as the students leave, whether they come to C T I or they go to L H S, wherever they may go after they leave us. That, that is on their mind as they go. So we're, we're really excited to have that come back.
Oh, definitely. My nephew's ten, well, he had ten with doing Tadron. You know, and he just naturally went towards that STEM route. And he, right now, get, he keeps upgrading his printer and building things. Out of his own mind and doing that. So.
Yep.
Well, we've got a couple of three D printers at the building. We'd love to see him back up and running and really kind of going through some kits, working some designs. So exactly right.
Can I say no? No, I just had, uh, you mentioned the yellow toe spaces and that's one of the, that's one that I know in Sanusette. It was significant outdoor upgrades on the, uh, pandemic outdoor lunch, breaks and math breaks and stuff. Um, so both schools now have enough space now. I know a lot of, uh, teachers are using, uh, one, one available. Do you have enough? Is there any more upgrades that could be done in that area? Given the fact that, like you mentioned, COVID might not be all the way gone. Maybe we should.
Actually, I'm glad you asked because our P T O is actually putting together some ideas about, uh, getting a fundraiser together to try to work and redo and revamp. Our outdoor classroom, which is a specific space out there, uh, basically a brick, bricked in area. Kind of almost like an amphitheater look to it, uh, that we do have outside that we've used as kind of a memorial garden, uh, in, uh, in the last few years. And we have some, you know, stone steps that the kids are able to sit on. Uh, but we have the need to kind of upgrade that. It's been a while since it's been put in. Uh, it was put in through a community push, uh, through a couple of local landscaping companies, uh, back before my time. And our P T O is really kind of coming together and saying, hey, that's something we want to kind of upgrade and, and bring some folks in. That is one of the areas we're looking to upgrade, uh, through our P T O. And of course, once you see some information on that, we love everybody's contributions on that end. And then there are some areas, you know, we've got, uh, in terms of outdoor for lunches, not quite the space that we would want to have. Uh, the space directly adjacent to our cafeteria is really our back driveway area with a very small grassed in area. Kids can take a break out there. It's really not viable for outdoor lunches as a full group. Uh, however, we do have some great areas out there. I do have some, uh, you know, old basketball hoops, out along our back parking lot, uh, that I've talked to Butch NATO and our senior custodian about, uh, having that be a future project too. Where let's get rid of the old ones. They're literally the old steel beams into the ground and just a, a, you know, fiberglass hoop. One of which has been ripped off completely at some point over one of the summers. Uh, but the hoop still exists and the kids still like taking shots on it. So. I, I think there's ample opportunity to expand those areas and I'd love to investigate the opportunities to do so.
I think there's still room in the becolic area of Sanusette Hill to, uh, add some outdoor space for our kids. Um, yeah, as you mentioned, Josh, our outdoor lunch area, we parted with, um, a couple, we had some parents who actually came to us. Um, one who was affiliated with Lowe's and said, hey, we can donate some things to you. And we were like, okay, let's, let's, we'd love that. Um, the L E F, uh, we partnered with them to, to design that outdoor space we have right out of one of our wings. Um, but we're always looking for areas for, for teachers to bring students out there, for kids to, to explore. Um, you know, we do have those grounds. We have a lot of area to cover. Um, and, um, it's something that is kind of continuously on the front burner for us. Um, you know, we did, we do have some new basketball hoops that we will bring back out as we get warmer now. Um, we got those two years ago, actually, my, my, right when I first got there, my first summer. Um, so there is opportunity definitely on those campuses, especially at our place. Um, we'd like to have some more space for kids to have that outdoor lunch area. It's, it's already being used again. Kids are back outside. It's great. They love it. And, um, it was going to be when we were kind of coming back this year and unsure of things. Now it's just an, an added bonus for that time. Yeah.
Greg and I, Greg, Greg and Greg, Greg. It's Greg first.
Uh, so one question then a follow-up. Um, so just looking at the budget from this year. Um, and we had the presentation last meeting that looked at kind of scores around different grade levels and where, groups were performing, I believe with sixth grade, was, was, seemed, seemed to stand out as struggling, um, this year.
Seven.
Seventh grade, sorry, seventh grade. Um, and just looking, it doesn't seem like we're, we've spent much on math. Uh, textbooks, learning material, maybe two hundred dollars out of eight thousand. So. Any, I, any perspective on, you know, that in terms of why we have to spend this more on that?
Well, in terms of the math program itself, again, uh, this pack, this current year is when we started the brand new Envisions curriculum product. And that comes with, uh, pretty much is a turnkey product. It comes with everything the teachers need. It comes with everything the students need. So the students have their own workbooks. Uh, there's a set program that goes along, set up to be specific, uh, daily processes. Now that doesn't mean we don't have areas where we can spend in those areas for supplemental, uh, materials.
Right.
That doesn't come out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our.
Yeah, that's a district paid curriculum across the board.
Our purchasing budget for, for math items would cover, uh, things that they would need, you know, calculators or replacing, um, manipulators that they may use. Um, any curriculum product, uh, of that nature, that would be a large purchase from, from the district.
And the follow-up to that would be, so I'm really looking at those scores of what we saw in the last presentation. I'm really worried about our seventh graders. Um, so how are you guys, what are you guys doing with our seventh graders and just grades as a whole to, to, to kind of, uh, help them get to where they need to be and how do you measure that?
That's a good question. I think, um, there's a couple of things that we, it's through this year at the middle school, uh, both middle schools. One is what we call our win period, um, stands for what I mean. Um, and essentially it is what they need each day. It could be enrichment. It could be extra help. Um, the teachers in their teams will take the students based on, um, some, uh, incoming data that they have. Um, some, you know, quick assessments that they may do and group the students based on ability in that regard. And this year, as we've come back into a normal day to day, that period each day, those students are getting some sort of, um, extra, whatever it may be. Um, and on top of that, we've got a program that we have, um, uh, started in the district, uh, that we use for our diagnostic assessments. I Ready. And I Ray's got this wonderful personalized instruction piece within it. That the students can actually, once they take the diagnostic and they see where they are based on grade level. If they're two or one, uh, grade level below where they should be, they can take that time during when, log on to I Ready and do some lessons that are tailored to those particular, um, skills that they may be, um, a little lacking in and build those back up. So there's a, there's a lot of things happening within the day to day. I, I'm also worried about, I, I'm worried about all of our kids in terms of assessments. Um, as we get closer, that's just the nature of the job. But, you know, we, we put a lot of safeguards in place to really try. And the teachers are now, um, as we get closer and closer to our first MCAS in a couple of weeks, they're, they're on the acceleration ramp here. They're really pushing to, to, to get those skills back up to, to where they should be and we hope to see good results. But we're doing a couple of things within the day to day at the middle school.
And the other key with that is of course in the, in, as a district as a whole, all of the leaders, all of the schools have really been focused, uh, on, uh, you know, what we've termed learning acceleration, which is something that DESI themselves, uh, have, have been pushing this year. And it's really about, uh, just as Paula mentioned earlier, it's, it's high level quality curriculum products. It's, uh, presenting your children with grade level challenges, making sure that they are working grade level work. Uh, and I think a lot of the research that we've been looking at, uh, a lot of it coming from the new teacher product, uh, project, has shown that students who are behind, if you will, uh, like we're worried about some of our, you mentioned our seventh graders. But I think there's some data points in there that show a lot of our kids, uh, might be experiencing some gaps in learning from, from the COVID pandemic. Uh, it really shows that when you present children who are behind with grade level challenges. They actually catch up faster than if you go back and try to reteach. For example, for a seventh grader going back and reteaching fifth grade standards. Give them the challenge of the seventh grade standards, give them just in time supports for the little pieces that they need, such as I Ready to help them refresh some skills. But focus that as the main focus of your classroom along with their peers. And the research has shown that they do catch up, which I hate that term, but they catch up faster than if you go back and try to reteach. Things that you think they missed. And that's been a focus all year long. I think we're really seeing it in our second round of I Ready, uh, diagnostics. We've seen a great increase almost across the board, uh, from our fall. Where we let the kids take the I Ready diagnostics in September. We just did another round in January, saw some great improvement. Doing another round after MCAS this year to really see where we finish up in the year. Uh, and that's really what our teachers are looking at and making curriculum moves based on that data.
Do you have a goal for, for the spring?
That's just a question.
Do you have a number that you're looking to attain?
The goal is as many kids as possible at grade level.
Right.
And I don't care what that number is, as many as possible. You're right.
That number can't.
Amorphous.
If you work in a private, you can't move that number. You got to set a goal. Everything you talked about needs to, to, you set the goal, then you put the pieces together to get you. That's, that's the story on how you get there. I think what the page that we're on is, we talk about this Atlantis. So what is the goal? You know what the numbers are. Realistic, don't set yourself goals that are not achievable or realistic. I think part of that is communicating to us as a committee. So.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What is the goal?
So I'd have to go back. I'd have to. I'd have to go back. I didn't bring those specific numbers. I didn't bring those specific numbers here with me today. But we have been looking at those and we've been looking at our kids overall. And we do, we do take it piece by piece. For example, uh Mr. Mayor, we will take kids who are. You know, a small group of kids who might be two grade levels behind on those diagnostics. Our goal for them is to get them one grade level behind by the next testing cycle.
I understand. We're we're provided with numbers.
Yep.
And that's unfortunately, that isn't, that's not widgets. These are kids. But all we have to look at and we're compared to and measured against and compared to other districts across the country, everyone else is. Is the is this data. So it's the only formula we can use. But I understand what you're saying. One student's up here.
That's it.
Students today had a good day and didn't have such a good Friday, but Monday he just came back rested and he's, but. The numbers are the overall aggregate of what we need to say we reached our goal as a school system. We're team members.
That's it.
Staff, everyone, a story all the way up down, superintendent, we want to push in the same direction, but we need to know what that is. We get what you're doing. We think you're doing wonderful. But we we need to see what's the goal.
I think Matt's got it at eighty percent.
Right? I mean, you don't wanna.
That can be achievable. We can do it.
I I told him he could run the marathon. All right, Mr. Greg, Greg, you have any questions?
No, no, thank you. All set.
Move on, Eileen.
Sure, I just um wanted to know um about family engagement because I think. You know, obviously that's a foundation for all kids' success, so just I didn't hear a lot about that, so. Just kind of let me know what you're doing to to get those family engagement.
Yeah, apologies. That's that should come through in pretty much everything we do, I think. Uh I know Matt will will talk a little bit about it too, but everything we do. Probably why it doesn't come out specifically as a point, I mean, is just everything we do includes the families. Anytime we try to have. Uh any kind of programming, we want the families there. Anytime we talk about social emotional learning. And working with students through any kind of concerns that they have. At every step of the way, communication with families is paramount to that. So. Our student support group, our social emotional learning programs, they all include communication with those families. Uh I think we're always looking for more ways to bring families into the building. In terms of just having them feel welcome, feel a part of what we're doing. Uh we certainly communicate. Almost too much in some cases to the families. And I think we've heard that from some, but we'd rather communicate more than enough. Uh and annoy some people who are sick of our emails that uh not reach some of the folks that we're trying to, so. Uh I think that's always part of everything you do.
I agree. And just speaking from from my end, um I'm blessed to have a really strong parent community up there. Um our PTO is outstanding. Uh they are really. Committed to supporting what we do at the school. They're always willing to lend a hand. Um you know, we have. Uh a number of things a- as as that go on throughout the year where parents are eager to come into the building. Um you know, we live in a show me world, so you know, all of our, uh as Doug mentioned, everything that we do is broadcast on social media, whether. I today and a couple uh things I posted, that's consistent and that's a great um way for us to communicate at home with families. About what's going on. And then, you know, we both do uh weekly, sometimes more than once weekly emails and phone calls to parents. Just about what's happening. Um you know, I'm really also lucky to have a a large uh school site council. Um you know, and it's 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 funny because most of those parents in that on that list there are six grade parents. I'm like, you know, you got this for two more years. You're not backing out now. You're with me. Um and they're they're ready, like they're really excited about kind of things we're doing there, so. Um we were hoping, and this is just at my school, we did before pre-COVID. We did a a giant um celebration at Thanksgiving for some of our families in the building. Um and obviously, we could have have not been able to do that. I'm hoping, my fingers are crossed, that fall twenty twenty two. That we'll bring that back. That's something that was a really wonderful experience and things of that. Um we've got our, I think our our arts night coming up in the uh spring. I'm not sure the exact date yet, but that's coming up in a couple of months, so we're. We've got a lot of things on the docket that are gonna involve our our wonderful family communities.
Great, thank you. I figured you were doing lots of stuff, but just wanted.
Absolutely.
It's nice to invite them back in the building. We've been meeting parents at the door throughout the last year, you know, really trying to. Keep people at bay. Um some of the schools now keep saying, can I have volunteers come in here? So it's nice to start having those in person visits.
Brendan?
Thank you, guys. Uh I was excited to hear about the stabbing piece. Um. One thing I I want to ask about though is there seems to be statewide uh push for the STEAM activity more. Often with the arts included. Um one thing I know I've heard about and a lot of others, I think probably I've heard about. Is band and chorus at the middle school level. Are we making some changes to that to get that more so it can be like a streamlined process? So you do band and chorus in high school that, you know, you're set up on that path to kind of beat the the um high school.
That is a great question. We've got a um wonderful group of educators in this commu- in this district that are um. You know, really uh supportive of the arts um and and in both of our buildings. Um you know, we make sure that uh we want to, we want to promote that as much as we can. Um I think the nice thing about, as I mentioned, the wind block earlier, that our 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 music program is benefiting from this year. Students that are, that maybe don't need the extra help, they're on grade level, they're they're flying, they're great. Um they've actually been going to the music room during the day to get some lessons. Um some extra, you know, and just to have a place to belong. Um it is, it's something that we we want to incorporate into the day as much as we can. Um you know, uh it's it's difficult to have that during the school day, band and chorus. Um just based on the needs of of, you know, the the core classes our students are taking and. Um uh you know, standards that we want them to meet. Uh but you know, it's something that is. Is never shied away from if if there's an opportunity for students to to take a break maybe from. Being in a classroom and going and and working on their instrument uh or practicing their their vocals in the room.
Man, you hit on a really good point there, which is just the community feel to it. Uh the educators that work in both band and music and any of the. Uh arts really in the district as a whole really work together as a tight team. Uh I can't say enough. You know, we have at Skyview Two, brand new. Literally brand new, never taught before, music teachers this year. And uh Mr. Cosme, who came on board at the beginning of the year, uh who was also our band teacher. Uh Arthur Pierce, Bobby Bergeron, uh everybody really, Bob Landry over at Samson, they have embraced him. Helped him out, supported him throughout. He's got over thirty kids in band right now. He just held auditions for uh to get jazz band up and running again, and that is already. Two leaps ahead of where I thought we'd be at this point with a brand new teacher, not having a lot to do with band and chorus over the last two years of COVID. Didn't think we'd get that far that fast and he is, he is actually at a point where, you know, he's got too many kids wanting to be there. We're trying to find ways to have that work. Uh so and that is gonna be part of, you know, the Mr. Marching Band is now advertising. They've got their night coming up tomorrow night, so they've been advertising with our kids. Great thing about that with Bobby Bergeron is. He allows middle school kids to be part of the high school marching band. Really kind of brings that connection together, helps them say, oh my gosh, this is awesome. This is something I can do in two years when I graduate, so uh and get to the high school. So a lot of connectivity there. Uh like I said, I can't say enough for the support that other teachers and other buildings have given. My two music teachers. Again, our second one, Kelsey Olden, just came on board in January. Uh taking over for Brendan May, who had, you know, ten years of stellar performances with chorus. Uh you know, unfortunately, we had a few kids who uh went to chorus because of Miss Lemay. And so Miss Olden is now establishing a reputation of herself, having really to kind of rebuild. The core group and start to get some more kids in, but uh she's got a lot of great ideas. She's got a good solid core group of eight to ten kids that. Come to see her every week and uh we're hoping to build on that as we get to the spring too.
Brendan, also, we've been meeting with the high school arts people to to talk about how to increase participation. And just look at things a little bit differently and keep it pretty flexible, so.
Yeah.
It's not a done deal. I mean, there's a lot to consider. The day is chompful.
I appreciate that and I totally understand. The day is full. You're trying to beat all the state standards. On top of, you know, other things we're trying to provide as extra for students and I just. Don't want, you know, kids to not be able to participate because it's not during the day. And sometimes I worry that that's the case and, you know, we've gone through a hard two years. This is a great way for students to express themselves and. Um you know, I, if there's things we can do to break it back part of the day, you know, I'd appreciate that.
One, and one thing I forgot to mention, and I should have not missed this, and I'm sorry, that we've actually have morning lessons. Uh Bob Landry does morning lessons for our kids uh four days a week. So the students are coming in before school and getting that experience as well. So there is, the program is definitely alive. Um there's a lot of opportunities throughout the school day. Whenever we we were flexible with time, whatever we can do. Um to get to keep the kids active in that.
Listen.
Um so I guess the last one is uh just having heard from parents at the beginning of the year. Um hearing about some of the behavior and the health challenges um that were really happening at the beginning of the school year and process and things like that. I guess kind of a check in on where we're at and things.
Sure, sure. Um and we'll both admit, the beginning of the year was was difficult. Um you know, transitioning back with all the kids back in the building again, um not being around each other for such such a period of time. It was tough. Um but I think I said to my staff right around after, right before Christmas, I think I was like. Think it's starting to feel normal again. You know, it's starting to feel like regular day, silly middle school behavior stuff, nothing really. Too significant. And then there's there's ups and downs throughout the school year with that, but to the larger point. Um both schools have wonderful support staff um that are always active uh within our building. You know, we. We have a great um set of counselors in the building. Uh you know, we've also got. Um it within our building, our our uh S S E program, which is um, you know, our behavior program for students with emotional behavior disabilities. Uh there's a counselor attached to that program, so there's a lot of support day to day. We also as an administration meet once a week just to discuss kids. Um and you're supposed to, your your goal is to bring. Students that are on your radar. We discuss what are the um, what are some things that we're doing to assist them? Do we need to move further to tier three resources? Do the, you know, is there mental health on the outside that needs to come in? Um and then on, and finally, I mentioned earlier that we do a lot of work with S C L. Uh in in the middle school especially. And this past year, we adopted a social emotional learning curriculum called Second Step that. We have done once a week within that wing block. Um all the teachers um have that uh product at their disposal. And um it's a quick twenty minute um lesson on very topics ranging from bullying to um cyber safety. Um to, you know, just um making certain choices each day. And that little bit, you know, um can affect a certain student. We're. Get a lot of things that we're 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 operating each day to to try and can things down. There's gonna be issues here and there. Um but I think, you know, and Doug would agree, we're 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 starting to feel pretty normal again.
And that was a big part of it. Truthfully, uh you know, I think Matt hit on this, was these kids didn't know how to be together. It's been a couple of years, so really, even though the behaviors were heightened. If you look back on it now, you're out of out of out of the height part of it, we can look back on it. Boy, a lot of them really were just. Oh, they just don't know how to be around twenty five kids at once. And it really wasn't horrible behaviors, but it just disruptive enough that you had to press it. It made everybody else kind of, oh, well, if he's disruptive, I'll be disruptive. But yeah, absolutely. I think the kids are back into the swing of things and. We're really, I I I hate to use the word normal too, but it really does feel like. Uh almost back to where we were a couple of years ago before this all hit. It's really feeling good.
Thank you. I I think you've both done a good job and great teams. My big thing will continue to be life science. If we miss this opportunity, it's an opportunity of a lifetime for these students. If we miss it and we're not ready for it, we we missed and we missed it. So bring me and stand back, it's a huge step in the right direction. But I do believe that we need a plan and a plan that shows us. Through middle school, it's no longer any good just to go to high school anymore, for life science, right? And you know this, right? You've got to engage them early on. Starting in fifth, sixth, seventh, all the way up. In your schools, our people work in in the industry. And our connection between what the industry needs and what's being taught in the schools, we need to connect, right? It has to be handoff between, you know, your last year at middle school, freshman year, and then and workforce. Simply, and and one big reason is they're willing to pay for your college. They're willing to pay for their future education, so. I think we need that master plan and you've got the ingredients problem within the schools to help create that. That when we need to be life science ready in the future, as I I mean. We're getting more jobs than any other part of the state. On the R and D section, we're probably gonna, you know, the R and D section will always be Cambridge and Boston because of the university and that's the research part of it all. The manufacturing part is ours. That's that's give, it's handed to us. It's ours for the taking. But, you know, there 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 are, obviously the curriculum has to be aligned and we've got to try to. Get students interested in it, right? In in those areas, but it isn't all just science. There are so many different aspects to it. And for instance, we started several years ago with an interruption for from COVID. It's getting mastered to come out here to the students and that, what is the center of technical education? To physically show them how to build a COVID, how to do some of the hands on. But you can be an engineer and drive a a train, subway, it could be an V T A car. You could be a person that works at the registry and motor vehicle. So it, mast dot encompasses so much. And and you know, on the life science part, it's we've got to be ready. And but there is more life science space being built here, manufacturing. In this area within six miles than anywhere else in the state, probably any more than anywhere else in New England, maybe the country. I mean, that's that's amazing. So I think. I would like to see, you probably have a lot of the components already there. But even if, I think, if, you know, my suggestion, even with this movement, even if we had to pay someone to help to put this curriculum together. Looking at what you're already doing and then with some of the voids are, it's not worth the money. But I think you have probably, and your buildings are probably the parents. Who already work in the industry can help you. I'm surprised, I shouldn't say this to you. I'm amazed at what I see. And who works, who lives in the community and what they do to work, you know, their locations, just find one. They can't even explain something. So that would be my big thing, and I think the stem is certainly a step in the right direction, but I think an overall plan. Uh step by step and as we, you know, as and 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 the funding is there. I mean, Mass File Tech is just. Itching to help us out with this in in terms of funding pot. Uh Callan Taladins is uh scheduled to be on cable show. Couple of months ago, that didn't work. She's the senior director of of science apprenticeships in Mass File Tech. So for the foundation, and she'll be on at three, I think, three and four. And they're just so anxious to come in and. Help us to do whatever it takes to sort of rule that next generation. Uh of employees and 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 when a student doesn't even have to borrow the money to take a loan. Student tuition is and they'll help you with that or pay for a lot of it. And it's, it's a, it's a wonderful thing. And I know it's not always easy, though. Get people excited about, you know, the words. That's been my biggest moment convention is you need to change it to something else. Because like ice cream, you know, mass life science can't be mass life science. It has to be something else. It sounds a little more exciting than that. And and so that was about to be my thing. And again, you're doing a great job. You've got good teams, you've got. More tenured teachers, new teachers coming in, break them from the school. You've got diverse schools, wonderful things. You have good facilities up there. I keep calling them those schools. I know they're not, but just feel like they're in schools. Um so that's, I think, a key to what this committee has to push for. Um and I'll say one last time and a million more times than the last time. These students graduating high school this year will have more opportunities than any other generation in the history of this country ever. At this school, at their school, it's. Uh I graduated, we had few. Very few. Today. I had, it's guys and women, as they say. Mr. Ron with a closing thought?
Yeah, I got two questions.
Yeah, I got two questions.
Yes, sir.
You were saying, you said something about just in time teaching versus catching up. Do you have the. Do you have the numbers that you used for those that did that you used just in time teaching versus. Catching up? You have the numbers, which one did better or did worse?
So we are looking at, again, this year, we started getting into what they're calling learning acceleration. Uh, there is an organization called the New Teacher Project. That did put together a full, uh, research based, uh, document out there and it's actually available. And I think link it through the D E website. I think it's linked in a few other places, but we've been using that. Uh, almost as you will, as, as a template for what we want to do in the buildings this year. So we've been, uh, looking at their research run, uh, we're hoping to be able to come through with our, our own data as we come through. Uh, like I said, with our, our second running of the I ready. Diagnostic, we're seeing good, solid improvement across the board. And we're hoping to see that continue right through the spring with our, our May running of the I ready diagnostics. Those are really our more solid data points. We of course have the anecdotal data points from our teachers every day. But if you're looking for hard cold facts, the learning, the, uh, learning acceleration document from. Uh, the new teaching, uh, sorry, the new teacher's project. Uh, would be the way to go because that's what we've been basing a lot of our work on this year.
All right, the last question is to feedback on Dean's.
I don't want you picking that up.
You said it, I didn't. Two weeks ago.
Just this one.
Two weeks ago, he was talking about how with YouTube, there are kids that are learning music. That they never could do before. And while you were talking, all of a sudden I jigged back. With the choral group or the music or whatever have you, is there a way or have the teachers? Have they been using the YouTube to have the kids teach themselves? Because you know, I think Brandon was saying how, you know, the data compressed.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
I, I know that. And so is there a way to use the, the YouTube so the kids? He was saying that, you know, you've got so many kids that want to.
Yep.
I think, um, Ron, I think YouTube and then that, so what, what you're getting at is. That's more of a, a personal thing for the kids to use to, to, if they want to learn something or, I mean, there's.
Well, you were saying, he was saying that, you know, so many kids that want to do this, do that, how to music, how to.
Yep.
There's a little point was saying that there's some kids that have been teaching themselves how to play the piano or play the, play the xylophone, play the banjo.
And, and the nice thing about, about our schools is that, especially in, in today's culture. Usually those kids that are doing that, sometimes they want to showcase that, they put that out there on their own social media or they put that out there. To their friends or those, and, and that will get back to the teachers. If students are doing that on their own. That we will get to, you know, we had a, um, case in point with a, a young lady join us last year. Uh, who moved into the district and, um, you know, someone had heard her sing or singing in class. And said, you need to go talk to Mr. Landry and you need to go to chorus. And, um, she was our soloist at the winter concert this year. She's got an amazing voice. So there, there are things of that and the, the, the community helps, uh, kind of foster that engagement.
I, I think one of the other things Ron was referencing is. So it's a compressed day going happen for a certain month, you know, but a lot of choral groups and other groups will say, here's some YouTube sites.
Yep.
Doing that music, exactly what we're doing or the play. And it was, you know, here's your segments. Go home and watch these YouTube videos because it's exactly, so it's kind of like practice.
Right.
You don't have all that to run five days weekly, but using those kind of venues.
Yeah, absolutely.
Enhance, you know, what you can't get done in that.
And just so you know, our, our teachers are absolutely using that in, within class, within some of the. Uh, the core rehearsals within some of the band rehearsals. That stuff does come through. They pick and choose themselves what they want the kids to look through. Uh, and find, uh, inspiring. And then I think as Matt said, you know, we've got a kid joining band this year and never played the flute before, wants to play the flute. She's going home and doing a lot of stuff on her own to get herself up to that point. Oh, absolutely.
Of course.
I learned how to change my brakes watching YouTube. I think it works fantastic.
What happens to the rest of the group?
It only gets better.
I'm just asking.
I think what they're saying is they can, it's almost like homework, right? Instead, it's like, here are some sites you can visit. Not so.
Voluntary.
Not, not that.
To get the kids to do what they wanted to.
Yes.
You have to like it.
Right.
And not program or have it, you know, this is your assignment. It's not one of the goal for me, homework to be, it's a joy to do it.
And that's why they just talked at length about exposing the students to as many new things, bring in outside speakers, hands on. Things they can actually touch and feel and say, yeah, that's, uh, you know, I have no clue why people walk by a certain musical instrument. And decide they want to play it when I've not even heard the names of these things, but somehow they saw it somewhere and now they want to play it. You're right. And that's what they're trying to do is expose them to as many things as they possibly can. And let the kid, let that student get really excited about it till they find something that they can't sleep at night because. They're so excited about, right? I mean, so that's, that's the goal is to find something that every student can get excited about because we know what happens. Kids that are excited about skateboards. Stitches, broken arms, head, they get right back up on skateboard and continue to do it. After they get back in the emergency room. So you're right, find something that they're passionate about, excited. That's, I think, what they're trying to do. And by the way, remember when you're twelve or thirteen and you missed out on two years, you missed out. Physically, two years, you missed out on physical, you know, the, the social interaction. You're dealing with students that missed out two years of the most critical times of their life.
Absolutely.
So much physically and mentally and just. And we expect them to go from zero to sixty in a month and a half because our numbers are down. It's gonna take a little longer than that. And so patience is, is, is necessary. They've been through a lot. We're, we're supposed to be resilient world. Right? We have been more experiences on a life than, uh, this is supposed to be their, it's like, you know, early golden years, right? And if it deprives, it took two years of confusion. Everybody did their best, but that's the, that's the end result, right? And now we want to give a test at the end of the year to compare them against, you know, where they should be, where, where they should be.
Kind of rate where they are.
Yeah, exactly.
That's right, the way to put it.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great to be here.
Express our appreciation to your teams.
Thank you for that.
Down sideways all around because it doesn't matter.
And they deserve it, so.
And, and we'll, we'll, um, try to do our best to get you to ice skating.
I appreciate that too. Just gotta be as smooth as possible. I'm gonna vacate my seat for Miss Maloney.
Yes.
But thank you all. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Very, very excited to be here. Because we got to talk about a project that Matt and I, um, are starting and we hope to grow in the district. And so, um, we were talking about media centers and Matt mentioned that the, uh, the learning hub. That he envisioned at San Set. And, um, so we were talking, no budget. Originally, we started talking about this, um, last year when Marine and I brought some, um, information to the cabinet. When we were talking about S R funds. And so in S R, we. Um, allocated some monies for media and libraries at the schools. And so now we're kicking it off. And so, um, Matt and I spoke, um, I had the, um. I had the privilege to meet, um, Dr. Jeremiah Frank. He's a Dell, let's see, his title is Senior Educational Strategist. He works for Dell. Um, he, there's no fee for his services. Um, we had our, we already partnered with Dell in a lot of ways. And so we met with Dr. Frank. And we started Brainstorm. And so one of the things that I wanted to do is give Matt a few minutes. And then I'll talk about where we go from here. So Matt?
Sure. Um, so I mentioned this briefly in my overview of what we're excited about San Set and, um. I, when I first came on board, um, you know, the, the structure of the school is, it's. You know, it's a beautiful school, um, you know, it's, I've been sitting up the hill, it's got some, some wonderful staff within it. Great students, great community. And, um, when I assessed it, I looked at it and I said, there's, there's some really, some areas where we can. Make some signature points. And one, and as we get to this now, is, is an academic centerpiece being the media center. Um, you know, we've got teachers that do great things in their classroom, but I, uh, my feeling was, wouldn't it be nice to have an area where. Uh, teachers could bring classrooms in, um, to do a lot of blended learning work where. They are maybe doing some independent reading and then sliding into, uh, some Chromebooks to do, um, some associated digital media projects. Um, you know, our media center specialist, uh, is next to the media center in the classroom. Um, and, you know, works, uh, with a lot of computer technology, you have computer science, things that she does with the students. Um, but she also oversees, uh, our, our library in there and checks out books to students. Um, and it would be great to have her situated in that room. She's not, she's not in there right now. Um, based on our, what's going on in there. And then with the combination of STEM coming back, that whole learning hub area. Um, is gonna have multiple modalities, uh, within the day to do, um, you know, some independent learning. Some actual classwork with that STEM and media special. And STEM and media actually can work hand in hand, which we're really excited about. Those two particular, um, classes for students, they might do a lot of cross-curricular work. Um, and students are working on some, some STEM works specifically, specifically researching three D, um, you know, printing and then. Going into the STEM lab and actually doing things. Um, so kind of coming back and forth with media and STEM. So. Looking at that space, um, and kind of really giving it a redesign so that it is a, a place for all of our schools to. Um, consistently be in throughout the day, uh, as part of their classroom, but also, um. Even a place to go at the end of the day for the kids to, to hang out and read a book if they're after school for. Band, if they're after school for a musical, if they're after school for waiting for the sports, but, you know, for, uh, cross-country or whatever. Hang out, do some work and, uh, and really have a, a nice place to go. So I'm, I'm excited for it.
Next. And, and one of the.
Would that be in the media centers ever?
Yeah, that's, that's right in the middle.
So it's not a pocket there, right?
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. Yep.
That's right.
And one, that's a sky view. We're, we're starting at San Set. And so one of the nice parts of, about this is. It's not just Matt and I sitting down and coming up with some ideas and implementing. Matt's worked with his site council, um, they'll be along, involved in the process. Teachers will be involved in the process. Now we'll talk to students, have them involved in the process. So. Um, I, I forgot to mention, Dr. Frank has been working with the New York Department of Education. On specifically this type of work. And so we're, we're fortunate to really have this resource. Um, being, being the, um. Frugal guy that I am, um, Dr. Frank is coming to district on Wednesday to meet with. Matt and some of his staff at Santa Set, do a walkthrough there while I tagged on the high school. So I said, listen, I'm not letting this opportunity go. You're driving up from New York. I want to capture you for the day. And so. Um, Dr. Dzinski has also met with his site council and will be starting to work there as well. And so, um, this is about as excited as I get, um, but. Thank you for those that laughed. Um, so really though, this is a project that, um, is exciting to me. Um, is going to just greatly benefit and transform our spaces into, you know, the next generation. Of, of. Media centers, learning hubs, you know, whatever you want to call it. So, um, thanks, Matt.
Sure, of course. Thank you.
So I, yeah, I just want to transition to, um, there's been some questions about the student device program.
Before, before the principals leave, can I just interject one? Do you mind, like, do you do like a week ahead for your activities, what's going on in your schools for a week ahead or something that you can send us? It's hot. I even have my assistants try to reach to the website and we're going on individual pages to find it all. We used to get, yeah, we used to get this news, this, this kind of week ahead or a month ahead.
I'll tell you what.
It's old school, but really I could attend a lot more when I, when, when we could schedule it.
If you, if you don't mind getting on the same email chain that. Mr. Riley, Ms. Allen are on and they'll tell you, it's a lot for me sometimes, but, uh, we can program into the school messenger, the whole school.
Yes, Steve, we could get that. I know it's old school, but even if it's electronic, but trying to find everything now. And going to the website and schools and it's so much, it's good that so much is going on, but it's hard to. To, to find out about something on a Wednesday sometimes, be there on Thursday when we, I think almost everything. That goes on in the schools, one of us is attending. At least, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
And, and I think we'd like to, I think if I speak for everyone, we'd like to attend more events. But we don't always know what's going on and we find out later, or sometimes I find out on Facebook after the event. Unified three thirty Wednesday. I, I heard that.
You got that one.
And I'm on it three o'clock on Thursday. So if you watch, we'll be talking that side time. So I'll trade you.
Oh, yeah, perfect time.
You guys had enough here.
So, so Steve, we're really talking about district, why not just schools.
No, I, I know. I did write that down. Um, so then we'll talk at cabinet about the best way to do that.
Because we don't need to.
We don't.
No, no, no.
That's exactly, that's.
Are you gonna have it on page or who want to, who want to look at it later?
No, no, he's, we're not, we're not recording on the work he's doing. And it's gonna be different at each of the sites. Because they have different needs at each of the sites. Um, the school community is different there. So what I'm hoping to do is that. He's going to come and work with me at high school in San Set. And then I'm hoping to duplicate the process at the other buildings.
It's the new improved futuristic media center. It's, the media center used to be a library and laptops.
Famous word. Begins with E and N Y.
Playa? That's what the digital age is, right? Okay.
I was gonna say, like, I love that we're starting it, but I hate to see that Skyview is missing out.
It's an overall plan. We're probably not going to give the attention to follow up for obvious reasons.
Right.
Um, but the other schools are going to be included. Definitely.
Right.
I have an attendant scanner. Go ahead, laugh it out.
You remember that hundred bucks you borrowed from me? You never take me back. Five percent interest in, in years. So.
Usually when I lose the group, it's due to my. Just a few points on the student device program because, um. We, we run the student device program differently depending on the grade level. And so at the high school, middle school, it's a true one-to-one program. Each student has a device, it's in their backpack, back and forth to school. Um, in a lot of places at the elementary level, three, four and five, it's also a true one-to-one program. In K one and two, we've, and three, four and five, we've left that a little bit more in the teacher's hands. So it's a need base, right? So if they have a project going on, they certainly can send it home. If we have, um, and if the lens outbreak, right, devices can go home. In K one and two, we've looked at it a little bit differently, where we have devices, an- enough devices for each student. But they're really not going back and forth at this time, right? The teachers just haven't put that into the program. We can if an emergency arises. If there's a weather emergency, we're gonna be out in a blizzard for three to four days. We, we can do that. We have to turn around above twenty-four hours. We can probably get that off, off the ground. And here's, and so then we have preschool program, right? So. Each, each of these programs look a little different in the devices that they have. K, excuse me, one through twelve, standard Chromebooks. K has a touchscreen Chromebook. And then preschool, they have iPads. And so depending, so you could see where. Preschool iPads, fully immersed touchscreen, right? No keyboard. K, we're transitioning them, they have a touchscreen, but they also have a keyboard. So we're transitioning them to use, getting used to a keyboard. And then one through twelve, standard Chromebooks. That, um, I, I do want to say though, in any grade level, if a student needs a certain device. For an I E P, they get that once. So this is, um, in addition, that's in addition to the student device program. One of the, one of the things about the Chromebooks, because that's the majority of our devices. Chromebooks are, they don't last forever. And they have, what's called an end of life. We try not to use that term. It's, it's really um a security and software upgrade to the device. And that, which is out by Google and it's periodic um and scheduled. So when those devices become end of life, they're less secure. That's one of the great reasons we have Chromebooks, because they're so secure and safe. Um so when they become end of life, we need to think about replacing them. The good news is, all of the devices that we have, there's a timeline for them. As soon as we buy a device, we know when it's coming end of life. That typically is, used to be five years, right? Within five years. Now they've stretched that out to what, five to eight years. Um my little tip for anyone buying a Chromebook is make sure you look that up before you purchase it. Because some of those great deals on Chromebooks, the price is low for a reason. It's because they're only good for maybe three years. The ones on um Black Friday, right? Their end of life might be only two to three years out, not five to eight years out. So that's just a little commercial. Um so
Why am I carrying iPhone thirty-seven now when it was supposed to last five to eight years?
Well
Because they made sure you needed one.
That's a, yeah. Well, that's a marketing, and then that's a controlling of the battery, but that's a different, that's a different sort of Yeah, right? In terms of staff devices, we're, we're in better shape than we've been in a long time. We, by the end of this spring, we will have had all teacher devices and then all support staff devices um replaced or on the replacement plan for a new, for a new device. Um we've heard the principals talk about replacement planning for technology. And so at any time, I can talk to the tech support staff in the buildings and get their replacement plan and talk about it with them. Who, they enter and talk about it with the admin. Um I could also talk about it with the admin. So that's, that's not just devices, computers, um but it's also projectors, flat panels, those kinds of things. So all of those things are listed and we have that replacement planning.
And that goes with the budget? So you're allocated fifty to fifty, Chromebooks are gonna expire, you've got that in the budget. Twenty more next year.
And so one of the things that, we bought so many Chromebooks in the last eighteen months, right, due COVID. Those are all coming end of life around a similar time. And so we need to plan for those, right? So the good news is, we know the dates, right? Um Kyle, Kyle White, the um system admin, he can run a report. All the devices, all the Chromebooks in district, he gives me a list on how many are coming up end of life this year. Um that number was seven, seven hundred and seventeen. So this year, we're already planning for seven hundred and seventeen to come off. What we're doing with them, those side note, we're, we're taking those that are becoming end of life. They're not going to get the updates that would be required for like an MCAS. And we're handing them to like K one, two, not for their primary device, we're putting them in parts for backup devices when some go out for repair. If somebody forgets theirs at home, they can sign one out from the library, those kinds of things. So we're, you know, if you know me, um we're using everything that we can for longer than, than we're supposed to. Um but you know, we're planning for it. One of the other things um that we, we've talked about, I mentioned before, was simplicity. That's a project that we're um hoping to complete by the end of the summer. And I'm gonna read, just check my notes a little bit. Um it is a hyper-converged infrastructure, right, into the environment. And that's, it's going to alleviate the need for as many servers as we have, with consolidating servers. It's going to help us to um, we'll have two hubs of that, right? So Mac, the central office, and the high school. There's redundancies and fail safes. Uh let's see. There's, there's a lot of technical things. One of the things I'm not as comfortable in terms of that planning, we have a network engineer that works on that, that works with us from Retrofit, our, our partner. But they'll be providing um planning, training, and then implementation with us, with our team. So they'll work directly with our team and they work directly with um HP. They're the, they're the seller. So we're excited about that because, and I think I, I mentioned this before, we're on the cutting edge in terms of the tech, technology and never seldom is a, is a school district on the cutting edge in terms of technology. We're usually on, you know, well behind, well behind, yes. And then the last thing that I just wanted to mention is we, we've done a lot um in terms of our internet safety and security. In the four years that I've been there, we, we have active backups. We have off-site email delegation through G-School. That was a lot of our problem prior, right? We know what the difficulties were prior. We didn't have backups. And we had e- a lot coming through our email that was on our, that we were hosting. Um we had cybersecurity training in two thousand nineteen and twenty for all staff. That was a partnership with the city. Um the city staff participated, school staff participated. That was um funded by the state and that was a great program. We'll have an opportunity for that again. Um but right now, you know, we've had that training and now, you know, we send out reminders consistently to them. So I hear all the time from our staff that um that has been effective. We have SOFOs. That is a um, it's a virus protection that's on every device that we have. Every um, every PC device. Chromebook, it's not necessary on Chromebooks. Um we have student filters and monitoring and they're active. We have newer firewalls. And those are supported through E-Rate. And then, like I said, we have this simplicity solution. So we're constantly planning, we're talking with Retrofit and our partners um around what are the next steps? Okay, we get to the next step, then we're thinking, hey, what, what are the next steps? But I, I'm not gonna bore everyone with um the budget talk, but I do want to highlight one piece that I know you have in your budget book and it's around the staffing. With so many additional devices, we increase staffing. That's just natural. Um we, we had the ability um to add, I believe for um building-based techs. Those are entry level, um level one, right, tech support. And then so they'll help a parent, help a student, they'll help a teacher, help an admin with a building-based problem. If they can't solve it, it gets bumped up to Kyle and Matt um in our, in our technology office. If they struggle with something or if it's taking them too long, they'll bump it to Retrofit. And Retrofit has a team of um, of, of people that will work on it. So it's a pretty solid, it's a pretty solid vision in terms of our, our technology um support. We have two help desks, one for families and students and one for staff. And um so that's just an overview. I, I know I talked a lot about um what we're doing, but there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of great things happening and we're, you know, we're excited. I, I we will have an opportunity just tomorrow to meet, um to see it in action, right? So tomorrow's the first day of MCAS at the high school. We'll be testing over four hundred students on Chromebooks in a few of the wings at the high school. All of the tech supports from the buildings will come here to the high school to support. Kyle, Matt, myself will be onsite. Retrofit will be on call. And but we did an infrastructure trial about two weeks ago and everything was, was uh, was good. So we're hopeful and um, yeah. And so tomorrow will be a, a good day for the tech team and for uh students and staff to not have technology get in the way, but to facilitate um their work.
Well, uh just for those that might be watching at home, what is the total budget? I know it's broken down by maintenance and tech, infrastructure maintenance and security. So what is the total budget, which includes all of those other positions, full positions? Matt, uh those other two positions, then you, you and then the private company?
So I, I do not have salary on this budget. And so my request for the preliminary budget, if I can read my number here, is a little over six hundred thousand dollars. But that, one of the hard parts is that we balance the S R money, right? So one year it might be a little bit lower. This is a year that it's going to be lower because of the devices have come out of S R. And so some years it's a little bit higher and some years it's lower.
But can you get us that bottom line of
I can get you everything, including the salaries.
Whatever you talked about tonight, it's the bottom line on that. I think that's helpful for people that might be watching, you know, what
So the You want like simplicity, because I talked about it tonight, broken out?
Yeah, well, just one lump sum.
Okay.
This is, I think you described tonight what you do.
Yeah.
Now it's, what is that bottom line? How much is, is that? So we can look at it, what percentage of the budget is in. Again, you said it's gonna vary depending on capital needs year to year. So I, I just like to go baseline. So look two years from now, our budget's gone up ten percent. And I assume it's gone up because of the salary ranges or maybe you didn't need the system as much as you, you know, that other outside companies you did.
Yeah, one, and one of our, one of our hopes is that we lessen the need for them as we become more competent, right? So Kyle is system admin, Matt's an assistant, um system admin. And those two have come so far in two years. And so as we develop skills, we'll lessen uh the need for outside support. I always see outside support having a place in our environment. Actually, we modeled that after the city. City convinced me that that was working so well on the city side that um, you know, the resources that they can come to bear.
They're awesome.
We just can't keep up with that, right? All the training, all of those kind of things. We call them and they've got a, you know, they've got a, an Apple guy. They've got all these guns. Yeah.
Did you have a question, Greg?
I just gotta say, do you, do you have like an, an IT strategy or roadmap? Because I think something like that, coming from IT, uh is helpful in planning budgets, seeing numbers. It's good. IT differs from year to year. My budget's crazy uh like three months after I already created. Um so do you have like a strategy or roadmap in terms of what your, your, your goals are?
I do not. Um but I work with the school, so like the replacement plans, I know it's a that's the, that's not a visionary type of a plan, but that's, that's kind of what we work out of mainly.
Some of the stuff that you have here in terms of like the, the uh uh storage and, and DR, like that's all you know, strategy stuff that you can put in there to, you know, all these things make sense to me as a, as a working IT. I think where your plan, what your ideas are, are very sound and it makes a lot of sense. I think just kind of putting that together in terms of what we could plan, what we have, what we want to do the next year, three years.
So that's part of the contract that we have with Retrofit. Um we have not just technical support. We have consulting services and then onsite. Um they meet with me, they meet with my team, um those kinds of planning things. This is one project that came from that.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with those uh, with the mission.
Great. Thank you.
I remember we first did our first inventory in nineteen ninety-four. And they asked me, how many PCs do you think go around here? Ten or twenty, and then went on inventory. Fine, some of the stuff was obsolete. It ended up in always somewhere, I mean, there were hundreds of pieces that no one knew, knew existed and not date, no plan or anything. So I think we talk strategy, it's, what is the, and what, what is the future of technology in education? Right? I think that's another question is, oh, you, you talked about little kids just using a um no, no, no keyboard. It's probably voice and well, that's where I was probably the future of technology. Uh these keyboards will probably be, I can't even imagine what we'd be using them for with voice activation and everything in another four to six years.
Don't make me go Star Trek reference now. Don't make me say a Star Trek reference.
No, but it's true. That's where I was, because and correct me if I'm wrong, but K one is touchscreen, right?
K.
K.
All the kindergarten devices, it's a Chromebook that is also touchscreen enabled.
And then it goes from graduate touchscreen to touchscreen keyboard and then just plain keyboard.
Right.
Okay. And then I wrote down the question mark because that's where the devil is with me. What happens if you have a kid, kindergarten touchscreen? Who doesn't want to do it the other way? Need to, once, keep doing the touchscreen all the way up.
Well, that's
More, more. Dean's point, voice activated. I mean, it's not Star Wars. I mean, you, you watch on TV, everything is voice activated.
Yeah. So we don't have um the voice activated technology yet for all students. But if they need a special accommodation, some students in our district do have um voice activated. They do have um accommodations for those type of devices. And then we provide those for them. The, the kindergarten that doesn't want to, that's why they have a choice in kindergarten, right? Because there's still a um very, very different developmental levels in K, probably more than any other grade level in s- in their skills.
But I, I was fishing for something.
Well, I would say, I don't know, Ronnie, I would say don't fish. If you have a question, just ask.
Well, no, it's because saying it's going that way. Because I wanted to know, is there, is there, is the, is is there movement towards fingerprinting?
Yes.
You know, where the kid, because that's where I was focused on.
Ron, if you've been to fast food, any restaurant, fast food, any, it's all touch, it's all touchscreen.
Right, but the touchscreen, you know, you
That's the future.
But, you know, just using your finger.
Yes.
Fingerprinting.
So we don't have any devices that a student would have a fingerprint, but our Chromebooks, um you have a scan code, you see scan codes everywhere.
Right.
We have badges that we can print out. Student can put a scan code up and it will log them into the computer. So
That follow all the way up to high school eventually.
That's available all the way up to high school if they want.
Wouldn't cost more. Well, that's where the devil I am.
No, no, that doesn't cost anymore.
Because you know, you get your set touchstone, Easto keyboard and touchstone. If you, if you eliminate that, Dean's point, if you don't have any keyboard all of a sudden, you're just using fingerprint.
No, that doesn't cost anymore. That's, that's incredible.
That's the future of technology is, is voice act- if you start on your, on your PC, Ron, you start typing a sentence, it most of the time is gonna fill the rest of your sentence out because it's algorithms, it already knows what you sooner or later, this is, they're gonna take out what you don't really need to know. But why are you wasting your time putting words when they already know what the word pattern is? Eventually, everything will be either touch or it's gonna be voice activated and the keyboard will be just something they have to show your brain gets. That's, but that's not gonna happen.
We're not there yet.
No.
Certainly an exciting time in education in terms of technology and the uses. It really is.
Mr. Steve, I'm gonna let you close out with your, one of your favorite Star Trek sayings. I wouldn't be right if you weren't, without you making that.
Yes, long and prosperous.
We don't want to do that in the office.
Now, you may not have been excited, you may not have gotten excited about that, but look at the response, look at the biofeedback. Right? The biofeedback was priceless, right? So you just tell that big time guy that's coming up from Delta tomorrow with a, 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 his title longer than the Declaration of Independence that um sometimes the reward is in the feedback rather than the salaries.
I will. He's coming Wednesday.
Wednesday. All right, let's get back to the agenda. We have more to do here. We're gonna move on to ethics disclosures. Do we have any ethics disclosures tonight?
Sure. Um I, uh, my husband uh at times uh does the books or the clock or whatever for various sporting events.
And we thank him for the one, honestly, it's hard to get anybody to do anything more. People are so busy. Thank, thank you for the one. And my son sometimes brings books and books to the players. All right. Anybody else want to disclose anything else? Drive by school, take a piece of paper without proper authorization now, the timing. If not, thank you for those disclosures. We'll now move on to the minutes for March seventh, twenty twenty-two. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? If so, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Amin.
I'll say it.
And a second, Mr. Perwin, are there any questions? And a second, and Mr. Perwin, are there any questions?
There's more than I can.
Yes.
Uh, it talks about two students from Levenson High, two students from Z D, two from Melzey, it's supposed to be one.
One from Melzey, and Melissa?
Under Anne Margaret Mitchell, here's other questions, Ben is discussing.
Ben, so we will make those corrections. If there are no further other corrections, errors, omissions, comments, all in favor, signify unusual manner. Those closed.
Yeah.
Now move on to uh, subcommittee reports, do we have finance update?
Like Melanie to report.
Melanie, in person, so I can come up and bring us up to speed.
Oh, it looks good, Mel. I, yeah, it's gonna be a quick one, but you know, right, that's okay, I'll come up. Um, we do have a status quo, so I will work on just the totals where we are sitting. So for our general fund expense line, we are, uh, have an available budget balance of five hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. And for our salary, uh, general fund salary line, we have three hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars available. That means a total of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred twenty dollars, uh, still available for the budget in the general fund total. We're watching that line closely and trying to uh, spend it down as we go, seeing as we have three months left.
There are little alert buttons that all of a sudden come in.
Listen, every single requisition gets approved through me, so yes, basically.
Alert, alert. Any questions, Melanie? And again, your choice is to whether you wanna come to the meetings or not, but it is.
I can put her at the beginning.
Yeah, actually, why don't we just do that?
It's fine, it, it's really okay.
And it just helps us month to month, because now from here on in, it's gonna just fly by.
It will fly, it will fly and uh, and we'll continue to kind of report. See, I know this is a small print and unfortunately it's trying to get a lot on one page, but I do try to leave some notes at the bottom of it to just let you know. You know, we paid our winter stipends for athletics and um, you know, custodial of P is climbing and continuing to climb because we cannot find staff. So we have staff that's covering and that's overtime. Um, so yeah, so I try to leave some notes at the bottom there. The only other thing I have tonight is a uh, request for transfer. It is not a transfer for dollar value, it is a transfer because Desi has created additional Desi codes. And they do that every once in a while to further classify and segregate costs for the end of year report. Um, this time they have targeted technology. And so you'll notice in the reports that I went ahead, um, the expenses have been broken down. So they've gone from Desi code fourteen fifty to um, multiple other Desi codes. Um, but I cannot move budgets because that needs an approval by the school committee over a certain amount.
So they just wanted to find, they wanna broke it down.
Correct, for the end of year report, yep.
And so, all right, so you need, we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, by Brandon. All right, second by Ron. And uh, any other questions, Melanie? All right, if not, all in favor, signify unusual manner, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll move on to policy.
Yep, we met tonight and um, we reviewed the wellness policy, which we will have on the agenda for the next uh, meeting to, of our first reading. Um, that was fine, but we do uh, look at a bunch of other policies that we are going to um, have our attorneys look at. We're gonna adopt some N and A and C, so we'll give everybody the um, final, just kind of policy the next meeting, so that.
Okay.
And uh, outline all the policies that we're going to be doing at our next meeting. And I think uh, you know, we are going to try to go through the entire policy book. Um, and it's, you know, I don't know if we'll get through it all this year, but certainly we'll make a dent in it. And then um, Steve Nicely is going to be, as policies are approved, he's going to have a link. So it'll be um, online through our website and you can just click on whatever policy you're interested in instead of trying to uh, find it. And Chris Nicely made um, a list of all of our policies. And when we had the first reading, second reading, when they were approved, um, so we'll, you know, keep that active and updated.
Is it possible, so my unofficial student survey for this month has been, have you ever read the student handbook? The answer is, I haven't found one student yet. Is it possible to do like the ten most important things you need to know about the student handbook? I know it's all important, you know, everyone's violating, we didn't get long enough, everything potentially will be in violation or something.
I mean, that's certainly something we could take a look at, we have not gotten the handbooks yet, because usually we get that a little um, later on to review.
Yellow, high, right, it is, honestly, I, I.
We pretty much cover all the pages in those handbooks, so you know, I'm pretty, I mean, I think we could certainly have them, I don't know, I think we do have an index, don't we?
Yes, there's an index.
So that they can just look at it.
They're not reading it.
But then their parents are, their parents are supposed to read it and have them and their students.
Did you make your insurance policies the automobile?
I did, I just got it and I, and I read, and I read the student handbook nine zillion times for all the grades.
All right, I'm just saying, you know, I guess.
Don't still read the employee handbook, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Not speaker.
About everybody, right, Sal, those employees that you, they're not reading them?
So.
They signed off.
So, so we do need to do the second reading of the mask policy.
All right.
Um, so I make a motion to approve that.
All right, so there's a motion, is there a second? All right, second by Melissa, any questions, comments about the updated mask policy? If not, all in favor, signify unusual manner?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yes.
Yay, thank you, Aline, and now we'll move on to Desi code transfer, which we did. And now we'll move on to new oral business, does anybody have any new oral business?
I have two things, one is that um, obviously we are in a market for a new special ed uh, director. And we do need to put together um, some school committee members to be on that um, uh, interview uh, board. Um, typically what happens is there's a two, usually two or three members um, that go through all the interviews. Um, and then it gets narrowed down and then the um, entire school committee interviews um, the final candidate. And we need to, that's a, one of our positions that is, hire. So we do need to um, come up with people to be on that committee. Um, because I would imagine uh, we're starting to.
We just, uh, we just closed the advocate pool on Friday, so we just talked about it this morning.
You, um, oh, yeah, it was already in, you posted. That's all we're gonna do.
Yeah, so we need to.
All right, Brandon, Melissa, anybody else, one more person, alternate?
I mean, I certainly can do it unless somebody else wants to do it, any of the folks wanna do it?
Okay.
So Jim's heading that committee, so just, he'll be in contact with him. And then the next thing that we need to do is um, superintendence evaluation. And so it was um, me and two other people who are no longer in the committee. So I need two more people and I would suggest that one be a new person and one be an old person since, when I say old, Dr. Andrew experienced. We'll be talking about the first half of the year. When the uh, new folks.
I mean, clearly, we've gotta kind of align our new membership.
Right, which is why I wanted one of each, just to.
Goals.
Then we can decide next year what happens.
Honestly, if you have to change some of your goals, then I don't think it's a big deal, we'll, we'll work on that. So anybody wanna be on, anybody wanna do that? Okay, all right, so get those out.
Yeah.
I'd probably do everybody.
Brandon, okay, cause I need one person, I'm gonna spell that.
We, we have one more meeting superintendent with the um.
High school next time.
That includes L C E and C T E I.
And the tradition, yes, all three gentlemen will be here.
So we'll do that, so the following meeting, would it be fair to, and to the evaluation at least, update us on that?
So I was also wondering if we could um, talk about having a full budget presentation for April twentieth. I know it's the week of vacation, it's a Wednesday, I didn't know how anyone felt about that, but the timing.
Anybody here going on vacation?
Probably.
Probably.
We don't take vacations.
I, I'll make it.
No, 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 we're tentative, just put again, this guy's tentative. Yeah, no, I'm going to more vacations.
Yeah, those get hurt, that's true.
We'll stay home. It's easy.
Good, thank you.
It's telling a roll of the trash, I don't even.
She's ready to go. So we'll have the high school for the next one.
Oh, just one more. Uh, so the high school theater department performed uh, the master.
Oh, yeah.
Theater deals this weekend and they did phenomenal, but people did not come home with a win.
Um, did they have fun?
They had fun, and they hosted this year, which they had not done in a number of years. And what I'm most proud of is that we got them a great, great feedback. Get both of our hosts and. Nice break.
And unfortunately, we had this weird snowstorm on the evening of Blackberry's show. And, but they had fifty feet of food. Table was five, fifty feet, that made so much food, they didn't wanna cancel it. And um, and they, they did such a nice job, they really did. And I've never seen so much food, I'm an Italian. Everything, it was fifty foot table of every imaginable food and serving, everything by it, so. Kudos to them, they've done a great job, that was excellent.
The C T E time?
Oh, yeah.
Is Costco London, is nine to noon on Saturday?
Okay.
It's nine to noon.
Thank you. Nine to noon, open house, okay, good, see where I'm getting back. And same thing tomorrow, expand, and if you have it's interested, it should uh, come by. It doesn't mean you're committed to anything, just means come and listen and ask questions if you'd like, but.
Doors are open.
It's all good, all good. All right, anything else in the new old business? If not, um, do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn, second, all in favor, thank you. A very meaningful meeting, thank you.